Are we all set?
Yes, SCR.
Okay. Welcome everyone to the Mary Chippewa County Board of Commissioners meeting. I call the meeting to order. A roll call.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Here.
Commissioner Savoy?
Here.
Commissioner Trainer?
Here.
Chairman Martin.
Pledge allegiance, Commissioner Lawrence, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a roll call, so any additions, deletions to the agenda?
I'll move.
Support.
Motion and support to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passed. Approval of the county board minutes of April 11th, 2024, page one.
So move?
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passed. Correspondence received by clerk's office, page 16. They are attached, no action is necessary. We'll move right into public comments. Anyone wishing to speak under public comment just come up to a podium or the desk. And just so you know, there's three minutes per person limit and 15 minutes per topic. We cannot respond or answer questions according to our bylaws, so just give us your name and go ahead.
Hello, my name is Twilyn Niznek. I have worked at My Michigan Sioux, formerly War Memorial Hospital since June of 2008. I have 16 years of service, four as an RN. I delivered all three of my babies here. It's wonderful being able to return to familiar caring people that we know. My family and my husband's family are here. I plan on raising my family here. One of the best parts of being part of our community is that we know each other pretty well. I went into nursing to make a positive difference in people's lives, to give back to my community. In the emergency department, I see people at their worst. No one plans on coming to the ED. No one plans on having a heart attack, a stroke, severe pain, a seizure, mental health crisis, allergic reaction, being unable to breathe, having a broken limb, or countless other medical emergencies. Or even when the clinic is closed, you, a loved one, or when your child is ill, we in the ER are there for you 24/7. I want to help the people that need help. Unfortunately, sometimes wait times in the ED are long. Sometimes it's because we have critical patients hanging on by a thread, knocking at desk door, and that patient requires multiple staff in their room trying to stabilize their loved one. But sometimes it's because we simply don't have enough staff. Our ICU was closed recently due to the nursing shortage and patients needed to be transferred. This means increased costs for our patients and how are they going to get home? Nurses are and have been leaving to go elsewhere because of higher compensation in both wages and benefits. That is hurting our hospital. It scares me walking into work not knowing if we are fully staffed. I feel that we have an amazing team that won't hesitate to help you and we all work well together. Every day I go into work and I hear more and more about which coworkers are planning on leaving. I'm very worried that if my mission doesn't invest in retention with nurses and other staff as well, more and more nurses and staff will continue to leave and that will impact, will not only be felt in our hospital, but in the entire community. We need a fair contract proposal. The current one does not bring us up to parity with the Upper Peninsula and My Michigan hospitals. For my family, it will directly impact us to where my healthcare insurance costs will increase over $4,200 a year compared to before. And this does not include dental or vision expenses. I don't understand why we can't retain some of our lost benefits or the PTO cash out or why there's no compensation for these lost benefits. I don't understand why our benefits are being reduced and why My Michigan is not offering a fair wage increase that will not only attract nurses to the hospital, but also retain them so that adequate staff levels can be maintained to enable nurses to provide quality patient care. The cost of living in the Sioux is also higher. We need fair market wages. I know that as an RN, if I am struggling, then so are my coworkers. I want to protect our patients, our families, and our community. I hope that My Michigan executives choose to invest in their nurses serving our community by offering a fair contract that serves patients, our community, and one that will help recruit and retain nurses. Thank you for your time.
I am Jill Halsey. I am an RN. I have been at War Memorial Hospital, now My Michigan Sioux, for 28 years. First in the ICU and now in utilization review case management. I graduated from Lake State College 37 years ago. I am committed to this community. When I moved here from Pontiac, I took a $7 an hour pay cut at that time because it was expected when working in the UP. The cost of living was lower then, but not anymore. Last week, Elmo's cost of living index was 73.7 compared to Sioux's index of 86 now. I have the same education and work just as hard as any other My Michigan nurse. Why should I make such a lesser wage for the same work just because I am a Sioux nurse? I want to feel appreciated, respected, and valued as any My Michigan employee. Sioux executives talk about family, a caring culture, and sharing the passion of patient care. However, being a family requires respect that neither the nurses nor the community are feeling with the way negotiations are going. My Michigan's message is that we are not worthy of the same pay for the same work. My Michigan has done nothing here to bring wages up to par for any of us compared to other UP hospitals and their other hospitals, especially when considering how much more nurses would have to pay for insurance. Instead, My Michigan invests in equipment and buildings rather than invest in staff to keep your care here in this community. On May 10th, there were 32 open RN physicians hospitalwide. We need a fair contract that aligns with the local community and the UP and is competitive to what My Michigan is paying at their other hospitals in order to effectively recruit and retain nurses and other staff. Having enough staff is what keeps our patients safe. We want our hospital to continue for another 100 years. All we are asking for is what is fair and for My Michigan to do right by our community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patty Wills. I want to thank you very much for allowing me to give my point of view as well. I'm a registered nurse at My Michigan Sioux Medical Center and a Chippewa County resident. And I actually moved here six years ago and really enjoy the small town hospital feel and the small community. I'm here to talk about what's happening at the hospital from my perspective because I believe the future of the hospital is very important to the people in Chippewa County and beyond. I work full-time nights in the long-term care unit, serving our most vulnerable population. And my fellow nurses and I pride ourselves in giving the best care we can to these people, to our patients that we really do enjoy taking care of. The problem lately is that we're short-staffed because nurses are going elsewhere for better pay and benefits. And if we have nurses leave, it's really hard to get someone new to come on board. We do have intern nurses that will work for three months in the summer and we have high hopes that we'll be able to hire them, but they choose to go elsewhere for a better starting wage. And this is not sustainable. So in order to help this deficit of staff, we have people pulled from other units to help that don't really know our patients well. And if you know, we deal with people with Alzheimer's and dementia and familiarity is very important to them as well as our nurses being familiar with them. So there's a potential for errors to happen when we take someone from another unit and just drop them into a new situation. And these nurses certainly do the best they can, but they're not trained to know how to take care of our patients. So it does take extra time for us to get them up to speed as well, which takes our time away from patients. We all want to provide the best care we can at all times and I want our local hospital to take care of our community. So right now, our unit is close to admissions due to short staffing, so we have to have some people that usually work day shift, work night shift. And we've also had some people leave to go do travel nursing because they get paid more. And it would be wonderful if the nurses in our community could be paid a fair wage so they don't have to feel like they have to go elsewhere. And the nurses that are working right now, we're working overtime, which means that although I'm hired to work six 12-hour shifts, I end up working up to eight in two weeks, which really does detract from your overall family time. And it's difficult. So I really hope that My Michigan invests in the nurses that we have here, provide incentive for the nurses that we have to stay so they don't feel like they have to leave. And like some of the other nurses said, it's really hard to see other nurses leaving. I really worry about the future of nursing and the future of our community. And I really want to maintain the small-town feel of our hospital. I really feel like this hospital is a center, a very important part of the community. It's just part of the center of the community as valuable as schools, hospital, churches. It's a very important part. And I want our nurses to feel valued and to be able to afford to live in the Sioux. And we're only asking what other UP hospitals and other My Michigan hospitals nurses are being paid and as well as for our nurses who have to not pay more for health insurance.
Ma'am, I have to cut you off.
It's a question.
Yeah, you're well over three minutes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
But thank you for listening.
Hello, county commissioners. My name is Lysus Loxman. I'm a lifelong Sioux community resident. I was born at what was formerly War Memorial Hospital. The same doctor that delivered me is now my own child's doctor. I have worked at the hospital for over 10 years. I started as a tech and I worked my way up from intern to grad nurse to a registered nurse. The very nurses that I worked alongside are the ones that inspired me to become a nurse. I have never dreamed of leaving this community or my workplace until very recently. From the perspective of a nurse, every single apartment at our hospital is short-staffed and patient care and safety is affected every day. As an emergency department nurse, I regularly have to take care of patients who are supposed to be admitted to the hospital, but they have to wait in the ER because there are no nurses to care for them on a medical floor or in ICU. This means longer wait times for those coming to our ER to seek care. We have had to treat our ambulances to our waiting room because we have no ER rooms to put them in. This is not fair for our community members. One of several contributing factors to short staffing at My Michigan Sioux is our wages. When nurses have many options that pay fair market wages, they will choose to leave instead of continuing to accept our hospital's low wages. This is one of the priorities that we as union are fighting for in our new contract. How can we recruit new nurses and retain our experienced nurses when our wages are several dollars lower than almost all facilities within an hour drive? The current offer is also a problem because it includes increased health insurance costs and a ban on covering spouses if they are offered insurance through their workplace. This means two premiums for some families. Why is a healthcare corporation coming in and pushing healthcare costs on the small businesses in our community? Additionally, we have limits on our PTO and this affects me greatly as I will lose what's equal to $200 a pay period. All of this to say that the transition to My Michigan was once a welcome one, but we have continuously been shown by My Michigan that our Sioux St. Mary nurses do not matter. We are asking them to show that we do matter and that we are worth investing in. Support of our local nurses will be greatly appreciated and this matters. And thank you for taking the time to ask.
Hi, my name is Danielle Laps. I apologize in advance, I'm a bit of a crier. I am currently a registered nurse at My Michigan Sioux Medical Center and I have been a Chippewa County resident my whole life. Not only did I grow up here, I went to college here. And this is where I realized I wanted to be a nurse. The hospital and the nurses that I've worked with have made me the nurse that I am. I've worked alongside the best in the biz, the most compassionate, kind, and competent nurses there are. And they deserve better. I started off as a CNA when I was 17 years old. And I've been here a total of 11 years, six years as a nurse. I used to feel valued. But the hospital executives' actions these past few years have changed that. Nurses are leaving and My Michigan doesn't seem to care. The people who run the hospital seem to have the attitude that they will just fill these jobs eventually. But I'm here to tell you that is not happening. I now feel disposable, yet how can I be when there's no one to replace me? I think it's important to note that of the people that I graduated with at Lake State, I am one of the only ones still working at the hospital. Unless My Michigan gets serious about recruitment and retention of nurses, the problem will only get worse. I truly worry about the future of our hospital and the future of healthcare in our community. This whole situation has shaken me to my core. I love this place and I hate to see it crumble. I just want what's best for our community and the nurses that I work with side by side every day. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else on this topic, could you take one more?
Just a public comment, yes. I just want to introduce myself. Thank you commissioners for your dedication to the county, this great county. I'm Parker Fairbairn, I'm from Emmett County, down under the bridge. Just wanted to introduce myself. I'm running for the State House of Representatives here. I'm here, I'm listening, and willing to answer any questions you may have after the meeting today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Brad Kusnen. And I'm head captain of the Drummond Island Ferry System. I have worked for four administrations in my 38 years with Eastern Upper Peninsula Transportation Authority. And I have to say that this current UPTA board has been incredibly supportive and our administration and staff are the best I have worked with ever. From repowering, repairing our aging fleet, building new ferries, revitalizing failing bus system, and building a state-of-the-art facility, I have never seen so much accomplished in such a short amount of time. Four years ago, this same administration and our current board chair came under attack for a fare increase that was sorely needed and a few people from the public, three sitting UPTA board members, one of which was a county commissioner from Drummond, almost brought UPTA to its knees. Thank you, Commissioner Savoy, Dan Martin, I think that's all that's left of them is from that era, for all the support you've given UPTA and our administration over the years. I understand all of you had just made a tough decision several months ago to end home healthcare and it was probably pretty controversial. I also understand that decision was a financial decision. I get it. And now Commissioner Trainer proceeds to attend UPTA meetings to criticize, humiliate, strong-arm their board and administration for having to make a tough decision based on finances and US Coast Guard regulations. Commissioner Trainer, that sounds like hypocrisy to me. As a constituent of yours from Drummond Island and longtime employee of UPTA, I hope that you will start supporting this board, administration, and staff through these tough times and not take the same path as your predecessor did four years ago. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else under public comment?
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
I'm Lynn Farmhouse with Chippewa County. Dan, and we missed the meeting the other night because of miscommunication. I apologize, Kelly. I kind of took it out on you when I found out about it and I shouldn't have done that. But anyway, there was some miscommunication. And I just wanted to let FAN's feelings know about the opioid funding. As stated in a recent letter, FAN and Chippewa County strongly encourage the commission to include people with firsthand knowledge regarding substance use disorders on the committee deciding where the opioid money may go. Those in recovery, those in charge of treatment facilities and sober living, those in behavioral health, community and tribal, those working with the MAT clientele and harm reduction, the health department, first responders, law enforcement, DHHS, community action, hopefully FAN and other concerned citizens. Just needs to be a group collaboration. In the event FAN and Chippewa County is not included in the advisory panel, we would like you to know our priorities or suggestions and what we see as possible help, as possibly helpful to our existing programs. A, like anyone working with those struggling with this disease and the efforts to help, we see a need for more treatment centers and sober living housing. This is a given. B, again, like most working in this area, we believe there needs to be more funding for those trying to meet obligations and appointments in post due to their illness and involvement with courts and treatment. Many leaving jail and going to sober living are without transportation to jobs as well. Help funding, transportation will help many. Adding peer coaches to our current drug court program and mental health court programs would greatly help those who participate. Statistics show that success rates for those programs as well as recovery greatly increase when peer coaches are available. We would encourage hiring peer coaches for existing programs. There is a vacancy for MDOC coaching position for parolees, but there needs to be someone available for those who have not had to go to prison but are participating in our current programs also. A counselor is not the same as a peer coach. In the meantime, we strongly encourage administrators in those programs to take advantage of online peer coaching. This service is offered free by FAN and I give you the information as to where to find that. FAN would also like to have the county bring speakers to address the problem of stigma in our community and make every effort to ensure law enforcement and medical personnel attend. Stigma kills. It needs to be addressed. FAN addressed. FAN has speakers who will come and speak to the community leaders, law enforcement personnel, and the general public, all free of charge. Our local chapter is willing to pay for the venue and any travel expenses or lodging that may be incurred. Statistics have shown that people struggling with, oh, this is the next one. Statistics have shown that people struggling with substance use disorders are five times more likely to seek help when programs like FAN's QR key program are in place in the community. This program requires a group of people to meet with those who have overdosed and talk about different programs that are available to them.
Ma'am, I'll have to cut you short too.
Pardon?
You're well over three minutes, so.
Am I?
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Anyone else, public comment?
Dave Ollie, recurring visitor, licensed land surveyor at large. First and foremost, complete solidarity with our nurses. I don't know what the board can do about it, but I would hope you support these folks because we need them. And I remember when you agonized over selling the property, yada, yada. I've talked to the real boss, Ms. Church here in the county, about the County Surveyor Act, which I've talked to you about before. You know, in the last meeting, you're defunding our county nurses as well. I mean, you guys know what that, you know, we're losing nursing positions from the county. And this would be an option to find the funding to, you know, reinstate our county nurses if we could, you know, it got me thinking about that. We have the opportunity, the action to abolish the office by May 15th of the year of the county officers are elected. We talked about that, Ms. Church, and we realize you can't get the board to do that. And Rob Layton, who is a constituent of mine, is a representative through my society, so I don't want to kibosh his county money. But the remontion, well, the county surveyor's office, going back to that as an elected position, it was antiquated. You could defund that position to save money for the county to fund nurses or Narcan programs or veterans programs. By the way, you have one of the best DA representatives, I think, in the state in Ms. Jacqueline Haas. And if there's any way you guys could recognize her for that and her service to this county and our veterans, I'd appreciate that. And then I've offered my services pro bono to the county. Retired state and federal employee with wealth of knowledge, I'm willing to share and help benefit the county and the cost savings to the county. And to that point, getting back, you know, to all the county surveyors that preceded Bill Carr, 36 years, we paid that guy to do nothing and profit on his own business. And we can talk about that and the county records that were absconded by the SIDA group from, you know, the petrochemical engineer Bill Sida, who bought the county records. And then, you know, makes it difficult for other people to compete in our profession in this location. What I want the remontion program to do, under our current county surveyor, Rob Layton, who was also the county commissioner, you guys can handle the purse strings and control this guy. I want him to put an emphasis on our patented land here in the village and our waterfront in particular because, you know, as we've talked before, you got a litigation landmine that's waiting to happen there. And I quite honestly don't think you have the legal representation of the county to, you know, fight that battle. I don't want to see tax dollars wasted on that battle. So I'll offer myself again. I'm in contact with Ms. Church. Thank you, gentlemen, for your service. And, you know, to my fellow constituents, notice there's certain board members in our here. You can remember those individuals out of life today. Take good luck.
Anybody else, public comment? Anthony, anyone on Zoom, public comment? Anthony?
We do not have anyone.
Okay, thank you. I will declare public comment closed. Thank you very much, folks. Administrators report, page 17. Kelly?
Nothing out of the ordinary, just the four usual annual controlled health department, sheriff's department, veterans affairs. If you have any questions on those numbers, just please let me know.
Okay, new business. First is Resolution 2024-11 and support a line five tunnel. Page 26.
I'll move.
Support.
Motion and support to approve the resolution, any discussion? Roll call, vote?
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Chairman Savoy?
Yes. Motion's passed. Next is enter local agreement for Chippewa, Lous, and Mackinac Counties to establish a multi-county materials management plan and designate EUP Regional Planning as the designated planning agency, page 28.
So move. Support.
Motion and support, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passed. Standing Committee reports building a grounds jail legislative and natural resources and information technology, Commissioner Trainer.
Regular meeting in Chippewa County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner's Building Grounds Jail Legislative Natural Resources Information Technology Committee was held on Tuesday, March 5th, 2024 at the Chippewa County Courthouse, St. Mary, Michigan. Trainer called the meeting to order at 10:00 AM with a quorum present. additions and deletions and approval of the agenda. It was moved by Commissioner Savoy, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve the agenda as presented on a voice vote. The motion carried. No public comments?
We have to vote on that?
Yeah.
Which one, the top one?
Yeah.
I support it.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Can we just note that it is April 24th? There is, the wrong date is in there. It's my fault.
Okay, go ahead.
Agenda items, Legislative and Natural Resources Board of Commissioners, District 1 opening, MCL 46.411 and 46.412. Moved by Commissioner Savoy, supported by Commissioner Trainer to recommend the full board per Michigan MCL 46412 to have Justin Nepper fill District 1 vacancy on a voice vote. The motion was carried.
I'll move.
Support.
Motion and support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passed.
Trial court funding. It was for information only. EMPG FY24 reduction, informal information only. Building a grounds circuit court ceiling $14,691 to be completed the week of September 9th.
It was moved by Commissioner Savoy, supported by Commissioner Traynor to approve the quota of fourteen thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars to repair and refinish the Circuit Court room's ceiling. Quote provided by National Painting Contractors and waiving the county purchasing policy on a voice vote. The motion carried. That's a move.
Support.
Motion and support, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass.
Refinish exterior wood courthouse doors for six thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars. It was moved by Commissioner Savoy, supported by Commissioner Traynor to approve the quote of six thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars to strip stain and apply urethane to ten exterior wood doors of the courthouse that are priced not to exceed six thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars, waiving purchasing policy. And for the work to be completed by National Painting Contractors, JAMA, on a voice vote, the motion was carried. Nice and move.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass.
Sheriff's Storage Building, change order canopy roof and entrance, eighty-seven hundred dollars. It was moved by Commissioner Savoy, supported by Commissioner Traynor to approve the five-foot overhang canopy as presented for eighty-seven hundred from Arbut Construction. On a voice vote, motion carried. Nice and move.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass.
Sheriff's Storage Building, Architects Field Report, information only. Sheriff's Storage Building and Animal Shelter driveway repairs. It was moved by Commissioner Savoy, supported by Commissioner Traynor to approve the request of the driveway repairs and approach an area of forty-five by fifty-five pending the price. On a voice vote, the motion carried. That's a move.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass.
Jail R T U seven repair replacement. It was moved by Commissioner Traynor, supported by Commissioner Savoy to approve replacement of the train R T U unit with a new unit of the same capacity at the cost of thirty-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars, waiving the county's purchasing policy. On a voice vote, the motion was carried. That's a move.
Support.
Motion and support, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass.
Committee and chairman's comments. None? Adjourn. It was motion by Commissioner Savoy, seconded by Commissioner Traynor. Adjourn the meeting on a voice vote. The motion was carried. That's a move.
Support.
Motion and support, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass. Next is Finance Claims and Accounts by myself and having to fill in as vice chair here tonight. I'm going to ask Commissioner Traynor to read those minutes.
You are in the meeting now. Recording in progress.
They're having difficulties with it tonight, just so you know.
Okay. We're good to go?
It's back now.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Traynor.
Regular meeting, Chippewa County Board of Commissioners, Finance Claims and Accounts Committee was held on Tuesday, May fourteenth, at the Chippewa County Courthouse in Sault Ste. Marie, Michigan. Chairman Savoy called the meeting to order at four-thirty p.m. with a quorum present. The meeting was available by Zoom. It was approval of the agenda. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Traynor to approve the agenda as presented on a voice vote. Motion carried. That's a move.
Support.
Motion and support, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass.
Public comment, no public comment was offered. Agenda items, Health Department server purchase. It was moved by Commissioner Traynor, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve and authorize the server purchase from D S T Tech at a price not to exceed sixteen thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars for the server power, Edge R three fifty, and to move the old server to Shack with funds from the Public Health Infrastructure Grant. On a voice vote, the motion was carried. Nice and move.
Support.
Motion and support, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass.
Health Department Quality Assurance Program Improvement. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin to acknowledge oversight for Q A, P I, monitoring for home health, home care, private duty, and hospice services provided by the Chippewa County Health Department between September two thousand and twenty-three through February two thousand and twenty-four. They have been reviewed on a voice vote. The motion was carried and I would support or move.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass.
Sheriff's Office, uplift costs for Chevy Silverado from Fund Two Seventy-three. Road Patrol O T up to thirteen thousand will seek M M R M A wrap grant. It was moved by Commissioner Traynor, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve and authorize up to thirteen thousand to be expended to uplift the Chevy Silverado, including bed organizer and hardcover from Fund Two Seventy-three, Road Patrol O T, and to seek M M R M A wrap grant to lower the costs. On a voice vote, the motion carried and that's a move.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass.
Sheriff's Office, Securus Technologies, Third Amendment Video Visits, twenty percent revenue. It was moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Traynor to approve and authorize the Securus Technologies Third Amendment effective until July eighth, two thousand and twenty-eight, or prior with written notice. Amendment as presented on a voice vote. The motion carried and that's a move.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass.
Sheriff's Office, two thousand and twenty-four Marine Safety Program Grant, twelve thousand one hundred dollars. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve and authorize acceptance of the two thousand and twenty-four Marine Safety Program Federal Funding Grant Agreement in the amount of twelve thousand one hundred dollars as presented on a voice vote. The motion carried and I would so move.
Support.
Motion and support, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass.
Animal Control, West Side Yard Work at Shelter, eighty-eight hundred dollars. It was moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Traynor to approve and authorize the quote of eighty-eight hundred from Arbut Construction to work on the west side of the animal shelter addition. On a voice vote, the motion carried. That's a move.
Support.
Motion and support, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass.
Information Systems, D S T Tech Updated Statement of Work and Monthly Cost is moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Traynor to approve the D S Tech Statement of Work for Professional Services Upgraded to Managed I T Plan Effective May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four as presented on a voice vote. Motion carried. Nice and move.
Support.
Motion and support, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass.
Information Systems, Review Bid Summary, Sheriff Building and Animal Shelter Camera Systems. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Traynor to approve the low bid from Shoreline Power Services to a total price of thirty-four thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Thirteen thousand two hundred for the Sheriff's Storage Building and twenty-one thousand five fifty for the animal shelter. And to approve the budget amendment of twenty-one five fifty for one oh one four thirty-nine seventy-nine on a voice vote, the motion carried. And that's a move.
Support.
Motion and support, discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass.
Public Defender, M I D C, two thousand and twenty-five plan. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin, acknowledged the total submittal of the two thousand and twenty-five Public Defender's Compliance Plan and Cost Analysis Renewal to the M I D C. On a voice vote, the motion carried. Nice and move.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passes.
Fifty Circuit Court Drug Court, Michigan Drug Court Grant Program, one hundred and three thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Ninety-first District Court Mental Health Court Grant Program, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and six cents. It was moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Traynor to approve the subtotal submittal of the Fifty Circuit Court Drug Court Grant Program for one hundred and three thousand four hundred fifty dollars. Ninety-first District Court Mental Health Court Grant in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand two hundred sixty-eight dollars and six cents on a voice vote. The motion carried and that's a move.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes.
Office of Emergency Services, new V H S U H F repeater replacement. Wave policy, it was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve and authorize Elcom Services to update the four-mile road repeater at the price of fourteen thousand two hundred seventy-seven dollars and thirty-six cents and to waive the county purchasing policy as presented. On a voice vote, the motion carried and that's a move.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass.
Finance Claims and Accounts, April County and Health Department. It was moved by Commissioner Traynor, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to recommend the approval of April County Bills and Payroll, General Claims, Other Fund Claims, Payroll, and the Health Department Claims and Payroll Total Claims. On a voice vote, the motion carried and that's a move.
Support.
Motion and support, pay the bills, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass.
Committee comments, there were none. Chairman comments, none were offered. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin to adjourn. That's a move.
Nice and move.
Motion and support to adjourn the finance, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion pass. Thank you, Commissioner Traynor. Next is Appointment of District One Commissioner Vacancy. You going to swear, man?
Yeah.
Justin Nepper, would you like to come forward? Will we swear, yeah?
Put in? Yeah. Okay.
Please, your right hand, you're three in front, I say, say, I do. I do solemnly affirm thou support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan. Thou wilt faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Commissioner for the County of Chippewa and the State of Michigan in part in the best of my ability to help the God.
Welcome. And thank you for our clerk. Just real quick here, Chairman Martin wasn't able to be here tonight, but being a new commissioner, he did appoint you to some committees. And I'll state which ones right now, and you can have this list. But it's Community Action and includes small cities. You're also on the County and City Liaison Committee. The Regional Planning, Superior Environmental Health Code, Board of Appeals, and Building Grounds Jail Legislative Natural Resources Information Technology Committee and Personnel Equalization and Transportation and Health Social Services Committee. Yeah, that's it.
And as well as the Finance Committee.
Yeah, all commissioners are members of the Finance, so. Thank you.
And the new Vice Chair of Finance is Mr. Lawrence.
Commissioner Lawrence, congratulations. So that'll bring us to Commissioner Report on Meetings and Board Representatives. Commissioner Lawrence, anything tonight?
I would say congratulations, Justin. Look forward to having your input and part of the commission. Glad you threw your name in that.
Commissioner Traynor?
Yes, I do have something. I've been working with the people on Neebush Island because they've been left aside as far as service. And UPTA has made a move to try and lift things up for them. And that was nice on their part, that they're making an effort to fix it up so the people on Neebush have a little bit more hours on the weekends to get back to their homes or come over on this side and maybe enjoy themselves. So I'm hoping to keep on working and get it stretched out a little bit more for them.
That brings it to my comments. And I want to thank all the nurses, the hospital representatives here. We heard your voices. I'm not going to get involved in labor disputes, but I hope that this can be resolved peacefully and for the better of our community and the care. Somehow, I hope it works solid. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move. Support.
Motion and support to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting concludes at five sixteen.